We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
McCarrigan.
Here.
Scanlon.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Vidla.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above lane. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes, Your Honor.
Five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency actions? Nope. Okay. Six, closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Yes. So you have public input under number twelve, but I thought maybe you could start taking it under twenty-five.
Number twelve.
Is this for the purpose of general comment, or?
Yeah, is this just a general comments or input on one of them? Okay. Are we okay to have him come forward now, Ken?
What item you want to speak to, Terry?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
Number five, it's a citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda.
Are you looking for a public comment?
Yes.
It's not on there. You can comment on any of the items.
It's not on the agenda.
So under five?
I'm just asking.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
My name is Terry Jessen. I purchased my first house in Scottsbluff in nineteen seventy-nine, so I've been in the area a long time. I want to speak to you about the stupid decision to close the recycling shed. I'm believing that it was not made by the council. I don't know if it was or not. So if it was on your agenda, I missed it. I am a serious recycler. I've recycled in Oshkosh, Chapel, Lodgepole, Oklala, Gothenburg, Kearney, Geering, Casper, and South Carolina. The best recycling of all those places was South Carolina. It was one I just happened on. And Indiana. I did a lot in Indiana, too. I think the city council needs to reopen the recycling shed that the taxpayers paid for and supported. I really would like to have an answer to who made the decision to close it and why.
I'm not sure.
I just found out about it closing, but it's open during business hours. It's just...
But that doesn't, that doesn't work. If, I'm guessing, I don't know that you'll do it, but if I'd had a show of hands from this table, who has ever been to the recycling shed to recycle? I think I'd only see one hand, maybe, or two. So you don't even, you're not familiar with it, I guess, is what I'm saying by that. Yeah, they closed it. The signings they put up said it was closed due to illegal dumping. I'd like to know what Nebraska statute was violated, because I think that's, that was a farce. The whole thing is a farce. So it's open, yes, for very limited hours. That doesn't fit everyone's schedule. Sure. If you, if you go there, I typically go evening when I'm leaving work before the bridge is closed. Now it's a little more inconvenient. Or you watch people over the weekend and, you know, the cardboard area. And I don't have much cardboard. I'm not really a cardboard recycler. I don't have much. But that cardboard is full every night. It's full over the weekend. I love to see that whole shed full. And that's what happens over the weekend. And most of those people, the people I've talked to there that are bringing recycling, well, I guess I'll have to quit, because they can't come during those hours they're open. When you do go, the hours are open. In the past, every person, including myself, that I've sent over there, they are really rude to you and you're intruding on men. Oh, well, if this is the business, you have to make an appointment. And that by itself was stupid. But it needs to be reopened.
Terry, I'll get you those answers.
I would appreciate it.
I would encourage you to contact me here at the office.
And I intended to do that. Over the last few days, it just didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah.
But I appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you, Kevin.
All right. Do we have any other questions or comments on the consent calendar?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes. Eight, financial report. Council to receive August two thousand twenty-four financial report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Lane Kesar, Finance Director. I'm going to go to page two of that. That's where I'll start on page two. We'll just go over the monthly. First off, that's supposed to say August thirty verse twenty twenty-four at the top. I caught that this morning. There's like six dates on that page, and I missed one, so I apologize for that. General Fund had a capital equipment purchase this month. That was the Parks Department, and they're a budgeted capital equipment purchase. And then the big one that you'll see is Street. You see that three million dollars. That's the Twentieth Street project. We were putting that, there is a combination project between Twentieth Street and then the PID over by Home Depot. That was all getting dumped into debt service. They needed to be shifted over to Street. So just some back in accounting. And that project's done now, too. That was the last, the last of those bills, so. So that one's done. And then we had a capital equipment purchase in Cemetery. They were able to get their vehicle finally after the fun little hailout that they had with their original, so. And then that was really the only major, major things that happened this month. If you want to go down to the next page there, Taylor. This will be your budget actual comparisons. The expenditures are the top two ones there. So we're at ninety-two percent through the fiscal year at the end of August. So anything up there that you see less than ninety-two percent, which is every department, it's just, you know, commitment to our department heads and how frugal they are. And then if you go look at the revenues, anything over ninety-two percent is where, is where they should be. A couple of those, like BID, Public Safety, and Capital Projects, those two, they're all showing a little bit less than ninety-two percent. They're property tax funded, though, so September will kind of get them over the hump on that one. And then the revenues versus expenditures is the last page. The only three, there's three of them over here that are, or four of them that are in the negatives. CGB, that was a timing issue just between the grant from last year to this fiscal year when that started. So that's why that one shows up negative on there. Debt service is some warrants trying to spin down that fund a little bit, and that's why that one shows negative. The MFO is that truck purchase that they had earlier this year. And then Cemetery Perpetual Fund, that's something that we're going to have to look closely at next budget to kind of get that fund squared away. But other than that, everything is, is in pretty good shape, and the budget's all ready to go for next fiscal year, so. Any questions?
On page two, Lane, you have at the top, fourth one down from the top, RBOT, tax paid out. What's RBOT?
Oh, that is the Regional Business Occupation Tax at the mall.
Oh.
That was, they submitted some reimbursements. Ninety, I think it was about ninety thousand dollars worth of reimbursements that they got back for improvements that they've made there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a lot of that Ross frontage and stuff like that that they had to do, so they, a lot of eligible expenses for that, so.
All right. Any other questions for Lane? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Vidla. Any other questions? Call the roll, please. Solomon.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Nine, public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. for the purpose of reviewing and obtaining comment on the question of whether the area described as properties and tracts of land within the general vicinity north of U.S. Highway twenty-six and south of East Twentieth Street along Delta Drive and Twenty-Fifth Avenue on the east edge of Scottsbluff is substandard and blighted. Whoa, the public hearing.
Mayor and Council, at the August Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission reviewed this blight study twenty. It's the two hotels over by Menards and the vacant land around Menards. They made a positive recommendation on approval. As you can see in the staff report with this blight study, the city will be sitting between thirty-one point five and thirty-two point two nine percent lighted. The state caps us out at thirty-five percent, so we're still, we're still comfortable. That's just the, the two numbers of difference between our city GIS department and MC Shaft. But with that, yeah.
The only thing that I would add, Your Honor, is that we were approached by a business owner in this area that's interested in redevelopment.
Okay.
And that's what inspired this study.
And then all this will be eligible for TIF funding, then?
All of the purple.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Would we be able to fix the road on that area, too?
The road, the road is ineligible for TIF financing, but the road should be in pretty decent shape. When we brought that into the city, I think we actually made a mill quite a bit of that road, Delta Drive, so that it would meet our standards in front of Menards.
Okay.
So it's, it's not that old. Twenty-Fifth Avenue is pretty new, and then Twentieth Street behind us, relatively new, too. But yeah, road, park, public parking, those are eligible for TIF.
All right. We'll close the public hearing. Ten, reports from staff, boards, and commissions. Council to discuss and consider action on the amendment of contract with Scottsbluff Firefighters Local Number Fifteen, Fourteen Fifty-four concerning Article Number Eight, wages, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Your Honor and Council, this is an amendment to the firefighter employee contract. And this was wage and insurance only. It wasn't full-blown contract negotiations. So this is an amendment to the existing contract for wages, and that reflects a three percent increase.
And does that coincide with our other employee increases that we've done, or?
Most of them, yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Why didn't we do a full negotiation? Just wasn't necessary right now, or?
I think they're in year two of a three-year contract, so.
So it's the cost of living, essentially?
Yeah, they can open every year to negotiate a cost of living increase. They can open for wages and insurance every year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Scanlon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
B, council to discuss and consider action on the agreement between the City of Scottsbluff and Local Union Number Fifteen Ninety-seven of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, AFL-CIO, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Your Honor and Council, this, this was a full-blown contract negotiation. That's why this is showing up a little different. This was a four-year contract that was negotiated. It's a three percent wage increase. We changed their vacation accrual to match that of general employees. They were behind the general employees a little bit. We changed their sick leave payout to match the general employees. Increased their on-call hourly to, from three to four. And they're, changed their clothing allowance. Also, in response to ask, them asking for more holidays, we gave them two more personal days, so there'll be three. So they'll have ten holidays and three personal days. So we increased the personal days by two.
And in that agreement, it was pretty big. It's for street, water.
Wastewater.
Wastewater.
Yeah.
And anything else, or is it just, that's it? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Caldwell. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Vidla.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
D, council to discuss and consider action on approving the renewal of lease agreements with Telecom West, Inc.,
We got to skip one.
Oh, I skipped one. Oh, I skipped the police officers. Council to discuss and consider action on the contract between the City of Scottsbluff and Scottsbluff Police Officers Association, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Yeah, Your Honor and Council, this was another full contract negotiation. And we, we negotiated, and Ken does this for us and does a great job. This was, is a three-year contract that's been agreed upon. They received the two additional personal days, same as everybody else did. They negotiated longevity pay. We changed their fitness program to mirror the general employees' fitness program. Before, it was kind of labor-intensive to track their trips to the gym and stuff like that, so. And the onus was on them to do that, so they wanted to do away with that and just mirror the, the general funds. And then we increased the FTO pay. So when our field training officers are teaching or training an officer, they used to get three percent out of class. Now, now they'll get five percent out of class. And it is a lot of work for them to do that, so it's well deserved. And then it's a five percent increase, cost of living increase for them. This keeps us in the array. These wages are going up across the state. Not only are we having to look at our array, but we're having to pay pretty close attention to what's going on regionally. And there's been some pretty healthy pay increases regionally. So we're trying to stay competitive and recruit new officers, which has been very difficult. That's why the five percent increase, which was different than the other employees. Just trying to be competitive and recruit new officers and retain the ones that we have.
Are we currently full strength?
No, we're four officers. We have four units right now. Seems like this, as soon as we make a little progress, we go back to four. But four seems to be where we've been staying, is four of these. We do have one person in the FTO program. He'll go to the January Academy. We did have thirteen applications for testing on this Friday, the twentieth, so that was a good sign. We have nine that have committed to coming to the testing, so that's, that's a pretty good sign. So one of those is a certified officer, is one of those.
Oh, great. What's the longevity pay?
The longevity pay is after ten years of service, they will get, it starts at ten years of service. And I think it's five hundred dollars. Yes.
Yeah.
Every year to fifteen, and then it goes up from there.
Okay.
So it's just a...
It's an incentive.
To retain.
Pay, yeah.
To retain our officers, so yeah. Part of our recruitment and retaining effort.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Caldwell. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
D, council to discuss and consider action on approving the renewal of lease agreements with Telecom West, Inc., for their wireless antenna systems on the airport and cemetery water towers, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
This is a two-year renewal, so we did this two years ago. It's exactly the same as it was. It's two hundred and twenty-five dollars for them to have their antenna on our airport tower and a hundred and fifty plus an internet connection through them for the cemetery tower. And our cemetery does have an internet connection through Telecom West, so. Staff is recommending approval. It's fairly short of rate, so.
And these lease rates have maintained at about this level for many years?
It's been, it's been a while. It has, yeah, yeah.
And these amounts are permanent?
Yes, they are, yeah, yeah. And we want, you know, the community, the rural community in our area to have affordable internet, so. We like the agreement. It's likely to change in the future. Who knows where technology's going to take us, so.
And how long is the agreement?
Two years.
Two years?
Two years.
All right. Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the agreement.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Vidla. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes. E, council to discuss and consider action on an agreement with Garcia &amp; Sons Interior and Exterior Services, LLC, to renovate Veterans Park bathrooms, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Your Honor and Council, Matt Carpenter, our Parks Director, worked hard to get two bids. I think he contacted well over ten contractors trying to get bids. He received two. One was for over a hundred thousand, and then there was this one for, I think, forty-three thousand. So we are recommending that this project be awarded to Garcia &amp; Sons, and I think there's a completion date of March of two thousand twenty-five, because we'd really like to have these bathrooms opened up for next summer. And it's a pretty practical agreement. You know, vandalism has been a big issue down there, and these fixtures are supposed to be vandal-proof. So hopefully, with this and some other improvements we make to the park, that they'll be well-kept for and appreciated.
Okay. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Scanlon. Any questions or comments?
It's exciting to get it back open, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
How long's Matt shut down?
It's been some years, five at least.
Four at least.
All right, call the roll, please.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Eleven, resolution and ordinances. Council to consider and take action on a resolution to declare study area number twenty generally described as properties and tracts of land within the general vicinity north of U.S. Highway twenty-six and south of East Twentieth Street along Delta Drive and Twenty-Fifth Avenue on the east edge of Scottsbluff is substandard and blighted as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law.
This, and Mayor and Council, this is the resolution to pass that substandard and blighted study. The one thing that I would ask is, or add, is that MC Shaft does a great job on these studies. They're being looked at by communities across the state, and Susan Myers specifically does a great job on these studies. We're lucky to have them.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidla.
Yes.
B, council to discuss and consider action on the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five pay resolution, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
And Mayor and Council, this is the pay resolution for this next budget cycle. It's got the three percent in there, with the exception of the police department's five percent. Payroll will be about two hundred thousand dollars less than the previous budget, because we've had some long-term employees retire, and they're... The, the, the employees that have taken their place are just lower on the pay scale, so there is a little bit of savings there this year, even with the increases.
And when will this go into effect? October?
Well, it'll be the first pay period in the next budget cycle, which I don't think is October. I think it's September twenty-third.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's the same idea.
All right. Do we have any questions?
I'll move to approve the pay resolution.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Vidla. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Vidla.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
C, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance adopting the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five.
An ordinance of the City of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill for fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand twenty-four, to appropriate sums for necessary expenses and liabilities to provide for an effective date and provide for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay, any questions? All right. D, council to consider action on the second reading of the ordinance allowing for exceeding the allowable growth and basic allowable growth limits for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year by one percent of budgeted restricted funds.
An ordinance for exceeding the allowable growth and basic allowable growth limits for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year by one percent of budgeted restricted funds, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Any questions? All right. Twelve, petitions, communications, and public input. A, council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for... For Racks Sports Bar, LLC, to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the West Nebraska Arts Center, one oh six East Eighteenth Street, Scottsbluff, Nebraska, on October third, two thousand twenty-four, from five to eight P M. for a Sir Optimus charity fundraiser.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tammy Cooley. I'm one of the owners at Baccaracks. We were approached by the Sir Optimus Group to provide liquor, wine, and beer at one of their charity events to be held. their charity events to be held at the Nebraska Arts Center, and so we are just asking for your permission for that special liquor license to be granted.
Okay.
Will this be a new event for you particularly to be serving at, the Seroptimus event? Is that new for you?
Um, yes. We've not done that before.
Okay.
And I'm Cindy Dickinson, representing Seroptimus, and it's so nice to see all these familiar faces.
It's good to see you, too.
Our charity event, actually, this is the second or third one, I think, that we've had at the Arts Center, the first time that we've worked with Racks. And it's, I brought pictures for you to see of, of some of our chairs that we've done in the past, so we take old chairs and repurpose them, make them fun and creative at the Arts Center, and then have an auction. The funds go towards scholarships for girls, so we have mentoring programs. Betsy is a fellow Seroptimus member, so she's familiar with the program, and so that's what we use the funds for. It's a great organization, so, and it's a fun event. Come out and join us. It's October 3rd, and it's at the Arts Center, and so we'll just do the kickoff on that day, and then the auction will actually last for the, almost the whole month of October, so you can stop into the Arts Center and, and bid on these fun chairs.
Okay? Kevin, any issues?
We've never had an issue at Western Nebraska Arts Center. They've been doing these type of fundraisers for a lot of years, and we, we've never been called there, so.
Okay.
I think it's a pretty select crowd, probably.
Yeah, very special people come.
Yes, very special.
Is there a ticket price associated with the event?
Is there a what?
A ticket price for entry?
No, there's not.
Okay.
No, you just come and bid on the, on the items, and that will be your ticket prices, the, the thousands of dollars that you'll pay for each of those. That's a good answer. Four hundreds, whatever, whatever you got.
Okay. Any other questions?
Sounds like a good cause.
It is, yes.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. McCarry again.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Thirteen, bids and awards. A, council to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for a 20-foot commercial Christmas tree for placement in the 18th Street Plaza to Christmas designers in the amount of $12,643.75.
Okay, Your Honor and council, I'd like to introduce our new rec. director is this week four.
Yes.
So, yeah, do you want to come forward and talk a little bit about this project?
Yeah. My first week, it was suggested that maybe the downtown Scotts Bluff Park, 18th Street Plaza, would benefit from a town Christmas tree, create our very own little Whoville. And so I did some research for the last first couple weeks I was here, and it calls out to several different sites, and only two got back to me, but this one seems like the best. It's a steel tree frame, and then the branches go on the outside, so, and it's anchored to the ground, and so it's sturdy for our west Nebraska climate and winds, and it's easy to take apart and store in the off months, and so it would be a good addition for our Christmas spirit downtown.
And because of the price, we're supposed to get three written quotes, but Debbie and Jack.
Yeah, only two of them got back to me out of this, several.
We're, we're good, we're good. So this is the lowest bid.
Okay.
And we think it's a great addition to the plaza activities that our Christmas parade and all of those Christmas-type activities have really been on. So if you've been to the parade, it's very, very well-intended, so we think this would be a great addition.
Do we have storage in the plaza area for the tree, or where do we keep the tree?
This will probably be kept at the Parks Board.
Okay.
That's good. It comes in sections and can be taken apart and put together.
Okay.
I love the idea of having something with good stability that's not going to fall over on children, so.
Yes.
The steel rings make a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's a solid frame and looks good.
Does it have a warranty on it since it's a bigger item?
I'm, I can check into that for sure. I am, their customer service has been stellar from the very beginning of trying to get bids and stuff. They've been really good at getting back to me on all the questions, so I imagine they have.
There's, there's not a lot to go wrong with the tree either.
I just think it lights, yeah.
It's still, and it's tapered, and I watched a video of them putting one together today on YouTube, just to get a fill for this. It's pretty solid.
Thanks for taking point on this, too. This is something I've wanted to see for so long.
Yes, yeah, I agree. Every year I drive downtown and want to see the hype.
All right. Any other questions?
We'll use Keno funds.
Keno.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Caldwell. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
McCarry again.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
We'll use Keno funds.
Keno.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Caldwell. Any questions or comments?